Yeah, yeah, she just, yep.
And then we'd have a little...
Yeah, it's gonna be a little place.
Beside us.
No.
Yeah, it sounded like...
Be a lot easier than training in Mexico.
Right, right, and some can't, right?
Yes.
Like, I've got it made, but I can't imagine.
After a road ride with veterans.
Morning, David.
I was gonna go to Onle, Michigan, to help you for racing. My nephew Paul already had to play in Robert. I never missed one.
And they were talking about changing the time of public kickoff, because originally it was, like, gonna start at 5:00 p.m. and...
It was 1:00.
Yeah, because Rhonda was like, well, then you can't ride after. You know, you should ride before, and I'm like, well, then it's not that nice. So, yeah, we did discuss that. We were looking at the map that... I'm not sure.
One to four or something, or one to five, right?
Yep.
Everybody could do that, since I can't go Michigan.
Did you put up your grant to... Grant, sir?
No.
That's it.
And now he doesn't... He postponed it to 2020. So, I sent him...
Really?
Send me my money back.
They can do that?
Three hundred bucks. I paid for the tickets.
I think I did an awesome... Yeah, I think, like, ten tickets or three... Or something like that.
Oh, look who's back.
Tolerable, within...
Did you have fun?
Tolerances.
Did you relax?
How is your back doing?
So you didn't need a vacation when you got home? Good.
My back is resolved. The ribs have resolved. The issue is...
Awesome.
Physical therapy on my shoulder.
No catastrophes happened while you were gone? No catastrophes, no washouts, no floods, no...
Generally getting old.
It's all good.
Requires more planning.
Well, they didn't dare...
Hi, Frankie.
They didn't dare tell her.
They would tell her. She has a good crew.
Actually, your body figures out the shortcuts.
No, I didn't want to...
And that's a problem.
They wanted her to relax.
Because you take mechanical shortcuts, and then it creates imbalances.
Where'd you go, more, yep?
I don't even know. Just a week.
We're not looking for another country.
Somebody had share tickets on Facebook.
Huh?
Somebody had share tickets on Facebook. I don't know. It just went up yesterday on the swap or something. I was kidding, and then Nikki really goes to a share concert.
Oh, share. Now I am... Share as an S A J.
No, share isn't a woman.
See, Willie Nelson's gonna be...
You had me a little worried there for a second.
Yeah, I didn't... You had the wrong word.
Good morning. I will call to order the meeting of the Cook County Board of Commissioners who are supporting our community through quality public service. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Making any adjustments to the agenda? If there are none, then a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we will have a few moments, or however long it takes, for public comment. If you would please come up to the microphone if you would like to have any comment. Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Anything here that you'd like to poll? Motion to approve is whole.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Remember to raise your hand. Thank you. All right, so we're going to have a presentation by Kristen? Thank you. From Highway. Good things happening.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, members of the public and colleagues. I see that ARDC isn't here quite yet. I apologize, I told them nine o'clock rather than asking them to come a little bit early. So I'll get started with my highway updates for the week. The first thing that I have put forward to the packet is the resolution requested by the Association of Minnesota Counties. As AMC advocates for a sustainable transportation funding package in one form or another with additional revenues to help us meet our transportation needs, they're requesting that all counties consider this resolution that was passed by their board last month. Before going into the resolution itself, I thought I would give an overview of the transportation funding options that are out there. Right now, as some folks may know, the sales tax from sales of auto parts is dedicated to the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund. What that brings for Cook County, if that stays where it's at, is that in 2020, we would be looking at about an additional $325,000 into our highway maintenance and construction budget for state aid highways if the sales tax on auto parts continues to be used towards the Highway User Tax Distribution Fund in Minnesota. There is a proposal that you may have heard about for a 20-cent gas tax increase. One thing that wasn't made clear in that proposal is that if the phased-in gas tax increase moves forward, the sales tax on auto parts goes away. Now, if that 20-cent gas tax increase were to move forward in 2020, Cook County would be looking at $263,000 in additional revenue towards our state aid highway system construction and maintenance. So essentially, that's a wash. If you take away that $325,000 from the sales tax on auto parts and give us about $263,000 from the start of that gas tax increase, we wouldn't really see any more projects on the ground in 2020 or 2021. If a fuel tax increase in the amount of 20 cents moved forward by 2023, the estimate is that Cook County would see an additional $1.3 million towards the construction and maintenance of our state aid highway system. Now, from what I'm hearing at the legislative level, I don't think that 20-cent gas tax increase is likely to pass, but it is important to know that if some level of gas tax increase passes and if that sales tax on auto parts goes back to the general fund, we might end up right about where we're at. We might not see any actual increase. Now, I'm going forward with the Association of Minnesota Counties' resolution. One thing that I appreciate about this resolution is it does not necessarily say the Cook County Board of Commissioners or Cook County supports a gas tax increase. I will read it for those who haven't had a chance to glance at the packet. Whereas Minnesota counties maintain 30,742 miles of county state aid highway roads and 14,141 miles of county roads totaling over 30% of the state's roadways. And whereas the total annual need is $1.084 billion over the next 25 years just to maintain the current state aid and county road system, not including expansion. And whereas the annual funding gap for counties has resulted in deferring basic maintenance, delaying expansion projects with resulting safety concerns, mounting congestion and missed economic growth for businesses and commuters. And whereas a comprehensive and sustainable transportation solution should include robust funding for roads, bridges, and transit and address the varying needs in different parts of the state. And whereas increased funding for Minnesota's Highway User Tax Distribution Fund would provide additional stable funds for MINDOT, all 87 counties, all cities with a population of 5,000 or more, and townships across the state. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cook County Board of Commissioners encourages the Minnesota Legislature to pass and the governor to sign a bill that brings adequate funding to Minnesota's statewide transportation system. Now, I wanted to go through that just to demonstrate that this resolution doesn't necessarily support either the gas tax or the sales tax on auto parts. It simply requests that there be adequate funding for Minnesota's transportation system over the long term. Are there any questions on the resolution?
Any questions? I think it's interesting that it says all cities in population of 5,000 or more. I hope with our census coming up next year that we'll be holding at 5,000, so...
We're not a city.
What do they do?
Our city doesn't qualify. Our city's 1,300.
Right, but it counties too, it says.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be interesting. Okay. No further questions or comments?
Yes, I'll comment on that.
Yes.
I definitely support that resolution because we do need to find sources of revenue to fix our roads. What we have right now isn't working. It is and it isn't. You know, you can drive anywhere. I drove the backroads back from this way this week. Minnesota roads are bad. That's all there is to it. And there is no money to fix them, so...
No, when you're having a biggest pothole competition, that's not something to be proud of.
No.
Well, and we do have the half a percent sales tax that went into effect. So we're getting, you know, money for that to be dedicated only to roads, so that helps. About all we could have done a few years ago, but... I don't know if I would support auto tax or auto parts or the 20 cents gas tax. That's tough on people, gas taxes. Auto parts, well, I guess we all have to fix our cars at various times, so that would work.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I would just remind everybody that Brady illustrated during the budget process a couple of years ago the gap in state funding for transportation of county roads. How a number of years ago, 10, 12 years ago, the amount of money that we received was sufficient to do the work that we were doing. But in 2015, 2016, there was over a $600,000 gap between what we were receiving and what our needs were. And a big portion of the large tax increases in the last couple of years were us supplying these needs and these costs to property tax levy because there was not an alternate source. So this resolution doesn't identify a source. It says the county needs to find a stable source to provide better funding and more adequate funding for all county roads. And I think it's important for the local taxpayers to understand that $600,000 of that big increase back a couple of years ago was to pay for that gap. The money's gonna come from somewhere. The roads have to be drivable, they have to be safe. And if we don't have adequate state funding through whatever source, then some of that's gonna have to be made up locally.
Thank you. I'll make the motion in support of the resolution.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Would it be helpful if we sent two letters, just to emphasize?
How about we just put it all in capital?
Okay, yeah.
Whatever it takes, huh?
Yeah.
So we've had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you.
And the next item that I have for your consideration this morning is to authorize MSA to prepare plans for the paving of Mineral Center Road this year. Just to go through that proposal in more detail, our current staff at the Highway Department is very busy working on the South Shore Drive plans, which you saw on your consent agenda this morning. We're hoping to receive the signed plans back from the state for South Shore Drive yet this week to keep the bid opening on May 7th. Otherwise, that may shift a week or two, depending on when we receive those signed plans back. We also have other consulting contracts that we're managing for County Road 45, Fifth Avenue West, the Two Island River Bridge, and other projects. And we do have that fourth position vacant right now at the Highway Department. Now, in order to move ahead with the paving of Mineral Center Road in 2019, we will be seeking outside assistance in the form of a consultant being MSA. MSA is the firm that designed the project originally, meaning their cost to develop these plans is slightly less than what another consultant would offer. They aren't starting from ground zero. And I believe we want to move ahead with this project in 2019 for a couple of reasons. The first of which is that Blacktop probably won't be getting any cheaper over the course of time. And we have made the commitment to pave Mineral Center Road to the Grand Portage community. It's a very important local project. We do have bond funds available, both for the construction costs for this project as well as the costs for MSA to design the project. So this is bond funds that would be used. And I know that... Correct me if I'm wrong, but there's an interest in investing those bond funds sooner rather than later for the projects that were authorized?
Yeah. There's a time to spend that money. Two years is the best, is to do it this year and get it done in two years to meet the arbitrage rules so that there's less scrutiny and analysis of that. We've just gone through that with a different bond, so we want to avoid that if we can.
Thanks, Brady. So in order to move ahead with bidding this project this year and hopefully paving Mineral Center Road in September, we would need to ask MSA to... or compensate MSA in the estimated amount of $28,390 to prepare the engineering plans and specifications for that project. Are there any questions on the Mineral Center Road project?
Questions, comments?
Well, I think it'll be good to get that project wrapped up this year. Everything went really good last year. They did a lot of work in a short amount of time. And I know that myself and the Grand Portage community definitely appreciates the county fixing the road finally, so...
I remember we had a great presentation at Grand Portage on the road and good input from the local people, especially if they knew there was a favorite spot for something or to just point something out. Put the little sticky note on the map. I think they all felt like they had a part in it then, too, so... Yeah, I think it's good.
Long overdue.
Mm-hmm.
But better late than never.
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe it's not too late, but...
So that's...
It's long overdue.
That construction is about how many miles?
Madam Chair, last year, we rebuilt up to a gravel surface, both Old Highway 61 and Mineral Center Road. This paving would just include the Mineral Center Road section, which is a few miles from 61 up to the intersection with Old 61.
Where the most of the people live?
Yeah, most of the people would take Mineral Center Road to get to the community gardens.
And you have the safety feature in your car. You actually have to use your signal or the car tries to put you back in your lane.
Put back in the lane?
Yeah. Some of those features are learning curve.
Are there any maintenance repercussions with rumble strips?
Not that I've been aware of.
As they wear out, they get more rumbly?
So this project up toward Grand Portage starts in August for not quite a month.
Which ones?
The rumble strips up toward Grand Portage?
Well, the entire rumble strip project begins probably around August, middle of August, and then extends through the second week of September. That's construction's guess on how long this project is gonna last. We are starting down by Two Harbors for... And then it... So it extends both in Lake and Cook Counties.
But the project up by Grand Portage, that would be done as part of that, when that job is off?
Right, so the one up by Grand Portage, that, however many miles that is, that's... Was that 2020, 2021?
I think it was 2021.
Okay.
Okay.
So the rumbles will be installed when that project...
The shoulder rumbles will be installed with that project.
So I thought I heard that the speed limit on our rural roads are gonna be 60 now?
That is correct. They are going to be raised.
And they're going to be raised, so then will there be signage put up?
Yes.
Within the next few months?
It won't... Probably not for a while yet. We have our state... We have our signing project that goes from basically Duluth all the way up to Grand Marais. We're gonna be doing a sign... full sign replacement. The speed limit signs will not be installed with that project. They will come at a later time, after that project is done.
So the speed limit is still 55?
Speed limit is still 55.
Until you see the sign?
Until you see the signs.
Okay.
And we will be sending out press releases and... Once we do... Our sign crews will be installing those signs.
But if there's no signs, the law is 60.
Huh?
If there's no signs, then the law is 60. We have a lot of areas without any signs.
Not until it's...
Passed.
Right, until we send out that press release saying that. We haven't quite dotted all the i's and t's, you know, crossed the t's yet.
Okay.
But that is coming, yes.
They're gonna tone down the reflectiveness of the signs, some?
No.
Why?
My new vehicle doesn't hit the signs.
Go into Hovland, you come around the corner down into Hovland, the signs reflect so bad that you can hardly see the road. If there was a deer there, you'd run it right over. I think this is a discussion that former Chairman Dishaw and Dwayne Hill had. Because we put miles on up here to deal with that.
Your car headlights might not hit it, but my headlights, I have automatic high beams that turn off, and those lights shut off my high beams because my headlights think there's another car coming, and it's from those signs.
Well, I've got a new... I don't... I've got that disabled, my auto high beams, because I think they're annoying.
I like it. So that I don't high beam someone accidentally.
But no, our reflectivity is there to stay.
Okay.
See how he said that nicely?
Well, John, it looks like you're up to speed with all these projects, and we have our engineer working with us here, and we're very thankful for that and for the work that you do. I don't know how you figure all this out when so much is coming with us that we've neglected with our roads because of money and so forth.
Well, it helps with it. Kristen and her staff do a very nice job of keeping up on things up here in Cook County.
Yeah, right.
Pat on the back. She does a very nice job for the county.
Yes. Okay, anything else you want to add? Anybody?
Russell, you want to talk about the PED plan?
Pardon me?
Russell's been working with us on a pedestrian plan that we're trying to finalize.
A quick update is, over the past, I guess it was from July 2018 to December, and actually, there's been some, I guess, I want to say project creep. But there's been some things that we've been wrapping up over the past few months as well. But we've been working with the Grand Marais community to create a pedestrian plan. And this was a plan created under a grant from Blue Cross and Blue Shield Center for Prevention. So if you haven't seen that plan, I think that's out in the world. Andrea Orest from Sawtooth Mountain Clinic, the ship coordinator for Grand Marais, is in control of that, so if you're interested, you can contact her. And that also feeds into the work that ARDC is doing with Cook County as we are preparing a transportation plan with the County Highway Department and other stakeholders throughout the county. So those are two other projects that we are doing in addition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work, everybody. Okay, any other questions or comments? Well, thank you so much, John and Russell and Murray, for coming, and I hope you have other things to do while you're in the area.
John visits us a lot. He likes it up here.
Thanks so much, and we'll wait for further updates, and we'll go to Min511, you said?
511, MN.com.
To get an updated road report?
Yeah.
Before we head out to anything?
Anything, yeah.
There's also an app.
Yes, I love that app.
Yeah.
When I was in Florida, the Min511 app pulled up the Florida roads because I hit it accidentally when I was trying to open another app. And I'm like, how could Florida use our Minnesota app?
Okay, we'll keep up with you.
Thank you.
All righty. Let's see.
Madam Chair, we're significantly ahead of schedule.
We are.
I tried to reach Linda and see if she could make 9:30. Might suggest that we just take a break and... So I can give her a call and find out if we're gonna be able to do that?
Okay. All righty, we will take a break until further notice from Linda.
Ten minutes, and then we'll come back.
Okay.
Oh, it was Florida, Molly.
Oh, it was warm and relaxing.
I mean, you know, when you have small kids, a vacation is basically just like parenting in another place. But...
But it's easier when it's warm.
It's easier when it's warm. And, you know, we can go to the pool every day and gash them. Wow, watch this. Watch this. Look at me. We went from the pool to the beach, back to the pool, back to the beach. And my parents were there, so they were helpful. Paul spent most of the time inside on his computer, working, unfortunately. A sanctioned vacation.
But you had a good vacation, well deserved, I know.
Yeah, it was great.
I'm not a big fan of...
I do need to, like, remove myself physically from the work environment for at least a 10-day period.
That's good.
Mostly didn't check email, which is...
Especially with young kids, it's so unfortunate. I remember when our kids were young, we always would take long trips when we could, just because it forces you to... But it's really funny because way back then, that was the 80s, 70s and 80s, there wasn't the technology to really distract you. I mean, now, we travel with it. But I notice more and more people just shut off everything.
That's the only way, I feel like, to remove... I mean, I've tried it both ways. And the only way to truly get refreshed is to have several days without even checking email. But then towards the end of the vacation, the anxiety starts to ramp up because I'm like, what is waiting for me?
What's going on?
If I get it back. But that's the benefit of having a good staff. Trust them to call you if really they need to.
I'll never forget when I had this remote cabin in McFarland Lake and no communication at all, so that was my escape, one of the reasons I did it. So my assistants were in charge, and I had to live with their decisions. And sometimes they weren't the best, but I had to support them.
Yeah, yep.
So you come, oh, yeah, that was a great idea, yeah, sure.
So we've been going to Florida for six years in a row. That's where my parents live. And this was the first year that I could leave for vacation without taking work with me. And that was so nice. And that is due solely to the fact that I have staff in place. They've been in place for long enough to know what they're doing, and I can trust them, and it's awesome.
That's such a big thing I...
There's a bunch of trees that are... Well, I could blow you too, but there's a bunch that are standing.
But boy, you've gotta have people. For so long, as a county, at least, I... Just from the outside looking in, things weren't functioning. Because...
Well, the turnover is devastating to, like, your work productivity. Well, the turnover is devastating to like your work productivity, to have constant turnover. I mean, especially in a high skilled job, every single one of the four jobs in my office are high skilled jobs. Yeah, so it was good, I'm glad I did it. I'm still kind of trying to reprogram my mind back into my system. For example, this morning at six fifteen AM, I was supposed to teach a class at the Y. I told you, show up because I do...
That reminds me, we're... Think in a way that we can get an app that can send out things from...
Pricing's good with the exchange rate and I guess the flying experience is wonderful.
Leaders, other strategic...
And just flying to Toronto and then they, you know, wherever from there. But she, she loves flying out there.
Emily?
You just have to remember the time change.
Oh, cancellations for the Y.
Yes, because, well, there's... But the time changes is the one thing that can mess you up because a lot of people don't remember the eastern time zone.
I met with her yesterday and we had a good talk. Appreciate your work and bonus.
I was watching a couple of the reports this morning and that's...
I'd like to spend more time with them.
Well, I think there's more that we can do. I hope you understand where I'm at, I don't want to reward negative behavior.
What's your, what's your destiny?
So a psychologist, I didn't really know what I meant.
Mostly diligence.
Those are the yearly claims, if we're going to bring them up.
And that is time consuming on both ends. Unfortunately, there's no one really assigned the county to have that.
Do you know Stuart Smith? He comes up every year, president of Georgia, in his days of leadership.
Yeah, otherwise things just break down.
I've got a question on a bill. Well, that's good. Everything else is routine.
Yeah, I, she showed me that list and that was one that I...
The last thing I've seen with some, not a petition, but just input. That's the last thing I saw.
At some point, we've just got to start getting, you know, your suggestions. And I see it. Seen it work.
Do I leave these with you or Tom?
As of yesterday, she forgot them this morning, so we...
Okay, thank you.
In fact, that was my conversation, purpose. It's got time to the Y. Otherwise, it's not going to... You live close.
You can't just let it go.
Yes. When we had that chamber of commerce thing up there, then we, the two lines, at the, yeah. I mean, that is a new, it moved, nobody got logged in, it was, they logged a lot of people. The acoustics aren't terrible and that was odd. They say it's coming back. Why are you a bar fighter? I never...
The dance, the food, the craziness, you know.
You had a chance to look through this?
No. I haven't had a chance to look through that.
Oh, you just didn't stay late enough.
He's still on the committee, you guys have to resolve that. He's still been appointed to that.
Remember, would I talk to Kay here about that or is it on the board?
You would, you would talk to me and the bro to take a look at that appointment and determine the length of it and what appropriate opportunities are. He's a public nominee to that committee. And he was appointed by the board and I'd have to look up the term. But I could, I could find that information for you. But understand, this is written from their perspective.
Mm-hmm.
Not our perspective.
Oh no, I'm really curious. Oh yeah, yeah, I'm very curious.
After Rondell's days, wasn't it? Was it?
It's talked about three years ago. For Grand Marie, we brought a lot of material into the community for that weekend. But again, Cajun food, it was loved to be cheap for twelve bucks or so, you get your month's.
So you go music.
Music becomes from New Orleans, it's pretty, pretty hot. A lot of beads thrown, I was...
I don't, I've texted, I've called, I don't have...
Yeah, there's not a lot, I mean, it can go to your...
There's nothing, there's nothing. Is there a presentation again, wrapping up?
Did I, did I miss this?
Yes, you did.
That was fast.
Yeah, it was very fast. It's because we just talked about the general description last week, so. Today's vote was administrative.
I didn't think I was going to miss a vote there.
You stepped out.
Yep, I stepped in the bathroom and it's... Well, and right when I stepped out, I saw...
Yeah, coming in?
Yeah, I was like, oh, okay, good, we'll start with the mid that.
I don't think that's a surprise and I don't think there was any...
No.
Question about that?
No, all of it, yeah. No, very little discussion too, because we discussed it...
Previously.
I mean, since it's going to stay there, I mean, we're not hearing anything.
I think we're going to need a new president. I'm serious. And a new head of the Bureau of Interior Department and their staff.
To drain the swamp, yep.
To just tell us...
The swamp, the swamp is us. Then, I don't think they can come back on that. Isn't there a statue of meditation?
Or you mean like...
They can't ask me, yeah, I could some... Well, let's just say, let's wait another year and say nothing yet and say, well, okay, let's, it's either keep it or let it, or if they want it back.
Well, it's interesting.
Should let us know. I mean, they're not going to take you to court for that.
I'm not, I know we're in that, but I may be not, but... I mean, they were very proud of sending that.
I think it was sort of...
They don't have, well, like I say, somebody figured out precisely. Their staff knows exactly. About the liveness?
Yes.
I, I think that they're so disconnected.
Molly, do you have a few minutes whenever we recess? But I just really wanted to, the General Order Committee is not going to be... Drafted for the twenty-fourth. And it really made you want Brady to concur that there's a reasonable things for us to be talking about. You don't have a phone number for Linda?
Facebook, Facebook friend.
Have you gotten hold of Linda?
I've tried every number I have and I've not heard anything, so do we just want to wait till she shows?
Well, we can finish up the end of it.
We could, but that won't, that won't take twenty minutes.
No, I know.
So I would probably give it another five or so.
Thank you, no problem.
She's got a stormwater.
Well, we might need that seven fifty, eighty thousand dollars because we might get six hundred thousand dollars less on that tie lock. That's, that's something I watched around here.
The President. But it's going to, it's going to pass. Well, of course, they're going to be, their administration evaluates it. So I don't know, maybe the House can... So valuation of it, maybe just straight at...
Well, you had time to do that yesterday.
Well, I didn't read it, every supplementary...
Well, of course, they won't even tell us.
It's like punishing. I think it's just completely incompetence and insanity and... This whole attitude as well, excuses will drain the swamp, which is generally, swamp is our service. Oh, well, hopefully the... We have enough people to make it go a different direction, but in this election. Of course, it's going to be chaos. It works more than... Typically, that's what happens with insanity, it just gets worse.
On that Bison project, do you think you guys will need some help?
Not right now.
No, you mean, okay. I think that's a great project. And this paving the highway to that place is really going to create a lot better access and...
It's actually down on the, this side of the reservation.
Daniel Center Road goes to that...
I'll go return this though.
Well, it connects her own, but it's, the Bison project's only about a mile up on the Reservation River side.
Oh, that side, okay. So that won't, okay, well, that makes sense. It's not by the community garden.
No.
But, okay. Well, we talked, I know that we talked about that on the Extension Committee. What's going on up there, it sounds great. Boy, that's really neat.
Isn't it?
It looks like a computer.
It's up in our public health room for people to use.
Is that a fox or a coyote?
You're asking a city girl. It's an animal.
Oh, okay. Two eyes.
It smells like suntan lotion in here. Like coconut.
When I arrived in Grand Marie, they had an art show.
They have what?
An art show.
Oh.
So it was fun.
Oh, yeah.
First, first Friday of the month.
Okay. Yeah. What's, 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 boy, I haven't been there for years now.
Well, they've got a little, a few little shops in the mall, which is...
McCroste, is it, was it the McCroste art show? Yeah, I used to deliver papers to the McCroste now. I forgot who the director was at the time. But he was the nicest guy and it was interesting. I don't know if he retired or what, but when I went to, for that Blenheim Leadership Training, he was actually working at the lodge. That's just like, whatever you need, we got it sort of guy. But it's funny reconnecting.
Excuse me.
GM, his name might have been GM or something.
Yeah, I don't know, Lofhand, who doesn't know?
Yeah, how's them all, how's them all doing?
Not very good, no re-drug went out.
Oh, it did. Oh, it did, oh.
That's huge.
Yeah.
Well, they have all the competition, Walmart and Target, and there's still another small pharmacy, so.
The Stokes, Stoke? Open, that's the office supply place, kinda around the corner there, but, just, uh, north of Reed.
I think it's still there in the corner, next to the Realtor shop, the Realtor, it used to be Rothstein's Realtor. I know the bakery closed.
And that was for their side, right?
Yeah, whole area where you parked in the middle of the street.
Yeah, is that just a parking lot now, or?
No, there's still other businesses there, but it used to be, oh, they made the best long johns.
Oh, yeah, the best, everything, and walking in there, it was like a kid's dream to walk into that.
See it displayed in the window, it was like, oh, yeah.
Well, that's really sad.
And Jenny and Company, which was a gift place.
Oh, yeah.
That went out last year.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it's just east of there, right, on, along the highway or something?
Um, well, where the railroad track and where the old depot used to be, there was, right there, in that development, there was, Wells Fargo was on, it used to be Northwest, and then it was little shops. Yeah, it's like, no.
Yeah, I delivered papers there, newspapers, yeah, and I bought my, uh, my club bag from Jenny and Company.
Did you?
Those were, those are cool bags back in, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yes, you were a cool dude.
Oh, I was a little behind the curve, I gotta say.
Well, I always feel I'm catching up, and then something happens, then it's like, oops. It's kind of like even trying to shop now for things is getting harder and harder with places closing.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I'm not a big online person, so I guess I'll just have to go to Thunder Bay.
Hmm.
I don't know. Or only say this is what I need.
Yeah. No, that's really sad, I.
Yeah.
What is?
Oh, just stores closing in Grand Rapids.
Oh.
Just bit by bit.
That's where you're from, right?
Yeah, 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 and Jenny was just there visiting, and she lived there for a number of years. So I was just getting the updates on what's new, and that's what's new is stores are closing, you know, downtown stores. So it's just like, yeah.
They have a Walmart on the outskirts.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, I think it's a Super Walmart, isn't there?
Um, I don't know if it is super, Sawmill down, Sawmill Lodge is down.
Ooh, that's nice.
The nights are great.
Well, it's torn down.
What?
Sawmill, yes.
What's there, nothing?
It, it, it's all under, there was a big, uh.
Development or something, or?
They don't know yet, yeah, friends are visiting, yeah, it's all turned down.
Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh.
But then the other place that advertised so much country, Timber, Timber Lodge.
I have never.
So you're coming.
Yeah, up and down.
How could I say it? Um, if you're coming out of Grand Rapids on 169, you go through businesses, pizza places, and, um, there's a McDonald's on a corner.
Yeah.
And if you turn left, there's a big Timber Lodge.
She's there for almost three years.
Cause there was a car dealership there, right, and that's where the old Walmart was.
Yes, the Walmart's moved out for.
Yeah. Past, is it past Target?
Yes, it's almost in the ravine.
Sure, yeah.
That's the last development, yeah.
Well, and the church is up there too, right?
Zion, Lutheran, mm-hmm. Catholic churches.
But the Catholic churches.
That's up the hill before you get to Target, or about the same area.
Right, right, yeah, but it's, it's.
Yes.
Kinda, uh.
It's in that corridor.
Right, yeah, yeah, past the Timber Lodge or whatever.
Timber Lodge is just like a black old, that's taken over all the receptions and.
Oh, oh.
You know, they were taking care of Sawmill.
Sure.
It was getting kinda damp and musty and, yeah.
Is, is the rainbow still standing, is that, no?
That went out, I would say, five, six years ago.
Yeah, that was, that was a little step down from Sawmill even.
Yeah.
But they had a Chinese restaurant in there.
Yes.
And there's one downtown though, now, I think.
He's the driver, he likes to drive.
Could be, could be.
Kinda across from where the bakery was.
Oh, is it?
I think, or it was.
There's a frame shop in there that I used to use a lot. But, you know, it was kinda like, Blandon has taken over everything downtown, but they've stopped.
Yeah, yeah. I.
When we first moved, we had a big international truck type thing, and when we came to Grand Rapids, we came out of British Columbia. And that was about the time that Blandon had been purchased by British Columbia Paper Products.
Oh.
So we'd drive around town, and my boys would say, oh, the kids, you're one of those Canadians that you're doing. Yeah, we're Canadian, but we're not part of Blandon.
Funny.
We are from Canada.
Coincidental.
Yeah. But I don't know, my, a lot of my friends are either retiring, moving out, or whatever, so. Maybe my trip's over quite as much, but they still have a great garden center, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
As long as I keep buying flowers, I'll keep going.
Yeah. Do you notice the culture change with that too, or no?
Not so much.
No, I think it's not. St. Joe's School is going pretty good.
Oh, good.
I'm just gonna write this out.
Before I.
Something just happened.
Because before I.
It's in the way of everything. It's just something else.
What are you saying?
Yeah, I'll ask, yeah, I'll ask.
And this is the time of year, I know.
Yeah, that's, that's, that'd be very strange. But. It'd be covered probably. Yeah.
Sit in the chair.
Right now? So I went out last night after I got home.
I think we're here, we're here.
And I went and did it, I finished what I had to do, I was out there for.
Okay, so we have everybody from Visite Cook County. Not everybody, that are important to come and give a presentation. Give us your update, uh, your good news.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Linda Jurick, Executive Director, Visite Cook County.
David Seaton, Board Chair and Owner of Hungry Jack Cutters.
Lily Nelson Peterson, Event Resource Coordinator at Visite Cook County.
Welcome.
Morning.
Thank you.
So we wanted to come to talk to you because annually, we're supposed to give you a report on how we use, uh, 1% lodging tax in Cook County, which we still intend to do. But because of some changes in the way that we've been doing that, or intend to do that, uh, we thought we'd come and give you a heads up just to make sure that there's no questions, and that there's no thoughts that we're trying to do anything that is inappropriate. So the origin of this is, uh, as a GTA member, one of the issues that we have is our community is not particularly conducive to single day events. It's just not something that works well into people's vacations who come up to the Gunflint Trail, you can't get people to come there for the ham run, or for, uh, the canoe races. They might do those things while they're there, and they're great, but to market those things is inefficient, uh, not necessarily a good cost benefit ratio. So when I became Board Chair of Visite Cook County, I thought, you know, let's see where the walls are. What can and can't we do according to the way the legislation is written? So I called Brady, and he and I emailed each other and both looked at the legislation, and we said, well, it doesn't really say we can only spend it on events. It just says it has to support tourism in Cook County, and it has to support the Events and Visitors Bureau, which is the former name of Visite Cook County. Same organization, same thing, same product, different name. So with that conversation, I went to the board, and we discussed different ways that we could integrate that into our program. And we came with, came up with some ideas and have decided to move forward on that, so we thought we'd come and let you know. So mainly, we wanted to know if you have any questions that we can answer for you, and I'll let the others here talk about details and data and those kinds of things.
Should we just continue?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, you'll see in your packet, um, a broadened use of the 1% allocation, which is a policy that was adopted by the board. Um, let me back up, um, Lily's been with us about one year now, it'll be one year the beginning of June, and she has really stepped up the game within our event, um, funding. She has, um, you'll see that in your packet as well, an event intake form, so she meets with every event coordinator, and, um, we have a very comprehensive conversation with them. Really details and outlines the expectations of Visite Cook County as far as even blending the event with a Visite Cook County piece, so that the funding trail shows itself within all the events. Um, as you can see on this sheet, it's not a small amount of money, it's over $400,000. When we sit down at the table, we bring all the events, we meet with every association, so we bring every event, um, to every association. So you will see where there's some true collaborative spirit in some of the events that we fund. Others are very, very significantly part of one community, and so you'll see funding coming from only that tourism association. Where we broaden that out a little bit is that, for instance, with the GTA, we have, as a board, decided that we are gonna be able to do some sub-branding. So for instance, um, we've been beholden to the Visite Cook County, representing the communities of Lutzen, Tofti, Schroeder, Grand Murray, Grand Portage. Now we're able to, say for instance, call out the words, the Gunflint Trail, within our marketing around even an event or not an event. And that's how we are intending to use the 1% in that broadened use. Back to Lily, she is a, a force, so there's a lot of analytical data that Lily is really able to grab. Um, we're knitting together a lot of the work that we do within Visite Cook County on a marketing spectrum, as well as with the event marketing. So, um, there's a lot of great data that we're gonna be able to push forward that shows the ROI on events that come into the area. We're also really driven, um, back to, um, the, uh, where we get our money. So we're, we're very, very keyed on the fact now that we wanna prove that the events or the branding drives lodging. So we're really knitting together that message as well, and making sure that we are looking at the ROI on visitorship to our area as it pertains to heads and beds. Would you like to add anything?
I think that wraps encompasses.
Um, you wanna work through any of these documents? A second. Um, so you'll see in the packet as well, um, for instance, a new event that we did last year, um, an event dashboard. This is something that we showed the, the Board of Directors, this event dashboard, it's, it happens to be the newest event that we launched last winter, which was the Dark Skies Festival. It was kind of a bookend to an August event, um, that, that teed up the dark skies, and, um, it was crazy good. And we had people standing outside the log room, um, or the green building at North House, is it the green building, right? Um, blue building, like peering in the windows because there was no room to sit. So those kinds of events, keeping in mind that we're always looking to build out our shoulder seasons, which we define as that slow season of right now, April pushing into May, as well as mid-November pushing into our first substantial, substantial snowfall. Um, this event fit perfectly for all those kinds of measurements, and we do a pretty significant intake on, on that. You get extra points if you're building out an event that, that lands in our shoulder season. So this is what our Board of Directors see, and I think it's really important, as a true, uh, destination marketing organization, you'll see how we've knit together the marketing components of that. And I, I would say that that's where Lily's really stepping up the game, in that she's meeting with event people, saying, hey, do you want us to help you with any kind of boosted social posts? What can we do for you for rat cards, posters, and whatnot, so, um, the talent is, is there.
I'm gonna have one thing on that.
Please do.
One of the other things that this event and Lily's work in particular has facilitated is, you'll notice that we've actually changed our mission just slightly. We've added the word sustainable to our tourism mission. Reason being, August 4th, we don't really need a whole lot more people here. But we do need people here the rest of the year to be able to employ and maintain facilities in all the businesses that help all those people on August 4th. So this kind of event and being able to show that, you know, okay, this was this really kinda weird idea that we came up with that didn't really cost a whole lot, but look what came out of it. That's a really good investment, and so it's investing in the community for a long term in a way that's sustainable, and we can move forward. So it helps us to make better decisions about how we can improve the community without overrunning the community.
So us April babies can have somewhere to have dinner?
Yeah.
Right.
Correct, that's one of the goals.
So if we have an event that we don't necessarily wanna market, but Visite Cook County should probably be aware of, would you suggest that you still let Lily know?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Please do, um, because we, one of my job, one part of my job is we maintain our, um, events calendar, which is very visitor-driven. Um, and that then turns into the event newsletter that we, um, circulate throughout the community, there's about 66,000, um, copies of that publication that go out every year. So any events in the community, just send them my way.
And again, one of the things that's really important to remember is that while Visite Cook County's purpose and funding is driven by people who come here, it's also for the people who live here. You know, the Blueberry Festival, most of the people that participate in that are locals, most of the people that participate in Fisherman's Picnic are locals. So the information's there for the, the citizens to use too, and it's, and it's, because it's not necessarily attached to a particular business or a particular community, that it benefits all the people that are here.
Right, and with my true marketing hat on, you know, when you think of the participation, let's use the Blueberry Festival, um, it's a local, it's a local event. I mean, I know that there's a lot of local blueberry pickers that, that participated in that event. That said, it is a marketing jewel for destination marketers like ourselves, I mean, that is like a cool thing, and, and what I, what I really want people to understand in our community is that Visite Cook County is looked at as a true industry leader, uh, in the state for what we've done. When you think of the waterfall experience, that was something that was kicked off in 2014, and it was really a conversation around the table about this shoulder season. And having, you know, have family here and been driving here for 30 years, knowing that this was one of my favorite times to drive up the shore, I said, well, we should market this. It's really interesting now, because when you look down into Duluth and to Lake County, and even, you know, in, in southern Minnesota where there is waterfalls, um, a lot of people have jumped on that waterfall train, and we look to that in a very, very collaborative spirit. I think, you know, it's, what's good for us is good for the whole state, so the hierarchy of, of, um, destination marketing. I have one more thing to add, um, just in a, um, in a workforce sense, um, we at Visite Cook County are very involved with the county and with the city when it comes to the, like, for instance, the Highway 61, um, construction project, and really finding the right words to embrace that project. And I know you as county leaders, and of course, our, um, city administrators at the city are feeling a lot of pressure from our locals, so, for instance, I have been serving on a Highway 61 redesign committee, working on signage, pedestrian wayfinding, and parking issues. And, um, I know that a lot of that percolates up here along, a lot, um, so, um, know that there are, there are people at the table, um, constantly working on those things. Um, I personally, um, let's just pick one thing, let's pick parking. I don't feel we have a parking problem, we at Visite Cook County have never, ever heard once from a visitor, a complaint on parking. Our visitors expect to walk, they expect to enjoy a stroll through Grand Murray. Um, so we're gonna do some fun things with our construction project, we are implementing Marie, our mascot, to be like the sign holder, four more miles to Grand Murray, you're almost there, kind of thing, and we're gonna have, um, the shop at the high school help us build those. So once again, incorporating that community spirit in the world of tourism marketing is, um, paramount in our minds.
Anything we can answer for you?
I think it's just me, the local, that complains about parking, cause I'm used to having lots of it at one point and none of it at another point, so. But I don't complain all that much.
Good and the bad, sometimes it's hard to separate them.
Lack of parking is a good thing in my world.
Madam Chair, uh, I reviewed the resolution that approved the, the funding for the Visitors Bureau and created the, um, it started it, and, and actually, in there it states, we've kinda lost track of this, but, uh, County Board is, uh, needs to approve the budget here. It actually states in there that they can't spend anything until the County Board approves the budget, so you've got that budget. So you've got that budget on this page here, so. Before we're done, that would be, I think, appropriate.
So the budget allocation page, event allocation? Of $435,410?
Because that's, that's all the 1% funding. That's the only part that we're responsible for.
Well, it's interesting how you've progressed over the last, what is it, six years, Linda, that you've been helping us Visico County?
Yes. It'll be six years in July.
Okay, yeah. And, um, you know, and you just think about all the different, um, events in the West End with using, you know, fat tires all year round in events. Who would have thought of that six years ago? I don't think we would have, and now we are, and who knows what other kind of vehicles we're going to have out there. And, and the dark sky, that was fabulous. Cause we have a dark sky, as long as we can keep it. Yeah. We just have to figure out when we can see the northern lights, when we can kind of, you know, schedule that.
There's an app.
That's kind of like all year, all summer. So let's look over this budget allocation. Any questions or comments on that? Anything you want to ask?
Well, I, I appreciate all the work that you've done and it's very clear, there's a lot more people visiting and that's a lot more heads and beds. And, um, and that, that has a ripple effect big time in our community and of course, also challenges. Um, but good challenges to have. Sometimes I think about, um, this, the, the, um, the lodging tax and if there are other ways we can use it, but it seems pretty clear that it's it's assigned just for marketing and so I need to remind myself that on a regular basis, that there are other challenges that come along with that and wouldn't it be nice if we could use this money to address some of those challenges, but really, no, this money is for marketing and it's, it's doing those things. So we need to look at other ways to help address, um, other challenges we might have. So just wanted to really thank you for, for your work and bringing all this money into, into the county, so.
Yeah, I would like to reiterate, uh, what Commissioner Mills said, that it's, it's, you're our economy. I don't know, what is it, 80 to 90% of our economy is tourism, so. And, uh, I really commend you for looking for a broader context of how you're going to market because I think that's going to have more sustainability, which is your goal. And it's called casting a broader net. And, uh, so I think that's very positive. You're a dynamic group.
Which also has its challenges.
Yeah.
And opportunities.
Where are the boundaries, yeah?
Right.
Thank you for all you do.
Okay, if there are any
I was going to make a motion to
Yeah. Are we ready for a motion?
To approve that, that budget, if, um, if that's necessary. That's what you're saying, Brady?
Yeah.
Yep.
You should.
I support.
Okay, any further questions or comments? All in favor then? Show a sign by eye, hands. Any opposed? Same sign. Have a great season too.
Thank you.
Okay. So it looks like we're moving on to Commissioner Concerns and Reports. Unless Jeff, do you have anything else before that?
I do not, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Reports. Anything there? About meetings to note. I guess I will say that, um, going over to our leadership conference was great. We certainly had, um, some time to reflect on some of the areas that we're working on and what we need to work on and it was a, a good pause to think about how we, um, approach events and decision-making. So it was very good. Any other meetings to note?
This afternoon, there's, um, uh, the, the Community Health Improvement Plan Meeting, that's at 1:00 PM. So I don't know if anyone's, um, anyone else is planning to attend, but I went to the, the first one and I plan on going to this one as well, so.
Okay, good.
Otherwise, of course, there's the Vacation Rental Hearing tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, so.
Mm-hmm.
Vacation Rental Ordinance.
Ordinance, thank you. I missed a word there. It even says it right here. Um, and, uh, and I'm, I'm expecting that to be well attended.
Heidi's been working on that for many years, so I take it you'll be there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm the ex-officio on the Planning Commission, so.
Okay.
Time of that one?
Six.
The hearing is at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
I think I asked before, it will be recorded, so I, I will be able to listen to it.
Yes, it will be
I'll be out of town.
Okay, and we have, um, you saw in your packet, the letter, um, to the US Forest Service in regards to pilt. So we will send that off and join other counties who have the same request.
And Madam Sheriff, uh, if that's supported, then I'll bring that to the meeting I'm attending tomorrow, which is with the Forest Service.
I'll be there too.
Okay.
Good, you're bringing it. I have a copy I was going to bring, but you can bring it. Thank you.
Okay. We definitely support it. Did you want a resolution or did you want us to?
Typically, the, the board would, would vote on sending a letter like that that's representing a policy, so it might be good to have a, a motion.
Okay, then we, I'll ask for a motion on that.
So move.
Support.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Anything else for updating? Otherwise, we will move into some anniversaries.
Yes.
I should do, Kirk.
So we have Danny Bergman at the Highway Department, nine years. Steven Butts at the Highway Department, 24 years. Curtis Loboda, also at the Highway Department, 14 years. Dusty Nelms in our Recorder's Office has been with us a couple decades. Thank you, Dusty. Kirk Oberg in our MIS, 12 years. Beth Wolke in our Auditor Treasurer's Office, 14 years. Lynn Wright in Public Health, five years. And Joe Zoller at our Sheriff's Department, 15 years. So thank you. There's some long-term employees and we appreciate all the work that they do, no matter how short or long their stay is.
That's right. Great appreciation. Is there anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you all.